Thank you, Thatcher. Item C, approval of the agenda.
For a motion. Make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do also.
Thank you. Item D, citizens' comments. Welcome to close that portion if you wish.
Yes.
Very good. Item E, approval of minutes. This will be the approval of the regular meeting minutes from January 11th, 2021, and that will be for the McCullough preliminary plat, the McCullough final plat, and voting on the chair and vice chair and the economic report.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also.
Thank you. Boards of appeals. There are none. Old business, there are none. New business, we're going to go ahead and review a portion of the subdivision regulations. Jump to it. Perfect. So, quick background. According to Article 13.105 of the subdivision regulations, an annual review of the subdivision regulations shall be undertaken by planning commission in January. This will help the planning commission give ideas and help best improve the regulations that we use for development moving forward. Items of note that have come up in the past year can be discussed and were documented for this meeting to help guide the conversation. So, once again, analysis, annual review. In order to maintain these regulations, including the official zoning maps, the planning commission shall annually hold a public review. Proceeding such review, the governing body and other affected government agencies and interested parties should be notified of intent to review and their ideas requested. Preparation for such review, the community development director being myself, shall maintain a master copy of the current zoning regulations, of which are recorded comments, et cetera. Information on any relevant changes in state statutes shall be compiled for the review. So, I went ahead and broke it down. This is kind of what a quick review of what it would look like. So, you have one, two, three, and four, zoning map, ideas and comments from other parties, comments and ideas from preceding years, information on any relevant changes in state statutes. So, we'll go by one through four. Number one being the zoning map. And this is obviously an open conversation, so feel free to interject, offer your opinions, thoughts, changes, et cetera. One thing I will say is, we've talked with most of you about this already once, and something to further consider is either adopting a new zoning regulation for higher density, which would obviously have to be approved by the planning commission and then finally approved by the governing body if we wanted to consider that. And then also the consideration of using that new higher-density zoning classification to amend a portion of Old Goddard, north of Santa Fe, west of 199th and south of 54. We are having more and more requests for rezonings, and that has not actually changed. We've actually had two new, actually three new requests for rezoning portions of Old Goddard for existing properties, both rental properties and people who own their own house who want to lease it or demolish it themselves and build duplexes. So, that, those requests are still ongoing. So, I've notified many people over time that these requests, if you want to do rezoning, would be, of course, first through the planning commission and then finally through the governing body. If it is R1 and they want to do conditional use, once again, they would have to do a conditional use permit through the planning commission. All of these, either rezoning or conditional use, require notification to all the property owners within 200 feet, et cetera. So, these processes require a lengthy period of time for entitlements to get a building permit to build a duplex or any type of multifamily in an R1. So, one way to help expedite this process is to upzone it, to require basically them to just simply go through that process and pull the building permit or submit a site plan and then pull the building permit. It would expedite that entitlement process and allow the private sector to move more fluidly in that portion of Goddard for getting these duplexes and multifamily. It's just a consideration, but something to consider.
Good question.
Yes.
You said they have to, so would it be, those things already be rezoned? Is that the idea?
Yes.
Or if somebody wanted to rezone, then it would just, it would just be a quicker process?
Yes. Basically, what we're seeing right now is that for every lot, anybody that wants to rezone, they have to go through a rezoning or they have to get a conditional use permit.
Right.
Either way, it has to go before the planning commission. If we did a blanket rezoning of a portion of Old Goddard, then they wouldn't have to go through that request. They wouldn't have to go. That's right. Yeah. But then a portion, a part of that, and this is kind of listening to some of the comments from citizens before in the past and some of the comments from the planning commission is that perhaps if we did a rezoning, maybe it would have to be a higher-density one that will allow for more units on less square footage, but also that would have to come with like a site plan for review, maybe something along those lines. So, at least people would know they can review what's going to be built there, so people could have a little more satisfaction that they're involved in the process. And another consideration was that if we did decide we wanted to upzone a portion of Old Goddard, we could have more public review, maybe have a public meeting where people could come give their opinions and discuss it. And that way, we would have the ability to sort of show and exemplify how this would actually improve their property value and how they would actually benefit as citizens from an upzoning, as opposed to simply saying it would benefit the developers for their adjacent lot and showing how it actually improves their own individual value on their properties. But something for consideration.
Does this kind of put us out of the picture, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but if someone came in and we had this blanket rezoning, then would it even come before us at all? Would we do a site plan or?
That would be for you to consider, yes. So, currently, if we, first, we would have to get a new zoning classification, and that would have to go before planning commission. And then if we did a blanket rezoning, they wouldn't have to come before planning commission every time they wanted to get a building permit for a duplex, unless in that zoning classification, it stipulated that every site plan submitted within this particular geography had to have a site plan, and that site plan had to be reviewed by planning commission. So, there's provisions in there to, if you wanted everyone who wanted to build a multifamily had to submit a site plan, had to come before planning commission. That can be written into the code. If you don't want to see every site plan that's being submitted, you could just simply do a rezoning, adopt the whole, for the whole of that portion, and simply say, come one, come all, we're happy with whatever type of multifamily you're going to be doing in that area. There's different ways you could approach it.
Good on both sides.
So, what? What would be the, if we're going to, if we do a blanket rezoning, why wouldn't you just do like, say, everything to be an R3, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't that include, you could do R2 or R1?
Right, right.
So, what's the purpose of a completely?
A new zoning classification? Yeah. With R1, R2, R3, they all come with their own what's called bulk regulations, and bulk regulations have like setbacks. You have to be 25 feet back from the front lot line, six from the side, 20 from the rear. With R3, and this is what we ran into with the 227 seater, R3 requires 5,000 square footage per dwelling unit. On some of the lots in Old Goddard, that's just unfeasible. So, if you want to, as a developer, let's say, if you want to generate more value off of that lot, you'd be stuck with just three units if you had 15,000 square feet. You could only do three units. You'd have to have 20,000 square feet to do four units, et cetera. And so, amending that to allow for more units on a smaller lot, you generate more value for the developer, the city generates more value, and you have more density in an area that would be able to complement the commercial that we have in our central business district. It's just things to consider. Most of the zoning just comes with bulk regulations in it. If we wanted to dictate how the formation of that portion of Old Goddard was to go, we'd probably want a new zoning classification, or else if we adopted R3, we would have to keep having variances to change it over time, and that's just a process to consider. That's very excellent question.
And the other thing I think about is, you know, with some of the public feedback that we've had, you know, on the, like with 227, and I know you guys have talked about, you know, in the past, feedback with, you know, the multi-units and stuff in Old Goddard was not all positive.
I put it mildly.
It's being recorded. And it's just, I'm just throwing this out there, it came to mind, you know, is if, I mean, if a blanket rezoning is, is just not going to fly with, with the public, then could, is it possible that we could do something like, if somebody is going to rebuild or somebody wants to buy one of those vacant lots and build, that there was just an easier process to get it rezoned and have that new zoning classification, or not?
Not necessarily. The reason is, there's a couple of different reasons. One is state law requires us to notify everyone within 200 feet for rezoning. So, that process, we'll kind of have our hands tied unless you want to go to Topeka and amend it over there. But that process requires us to notify everybody. Also, state law requires any type of rezoning to actually go before planning commission first. So, you can do a blanket rezoning. That's allowed before planning commission, and then, of course, anybody who submits a building permit, at that point, would just be conforming to that zoning regulation.
So, that doesn't require the public?
Not every, if you do a blanket rezoning ordinance, yeah. So, if the planning commission did a blanket rezoning of a portion of Goddard, let's say, and it went before the governing body and they approved it, at that point, if, if that rezoning allowed for multifamily, they would just be pulling building permits because at that point it'd be in conformance with that zoning classification.
So, the blanket rezoning doesn't require the public comment, like rezoning individuals?
That's right. So, I mean, it'll be open, it'd be a public meeting, and we would, it would be published in the city newspaper at which point, but it doesn't require an individual letter to be sent out to every individual who's being, who's having their properties rezoned.
Right.
If you're affecting one individual lot, for example, or if somebody is saying, we're just rezoning this lot, everyone has to be notified. But if you're rezoning generally multiple lots, then it doesn't require every individual lot that's being rezoned to be notified, other than in public newspapers, so.
We'd do Zoom that night, right?
Say it again.
We'd do Zoom on that night?
No, but you're welcome to wear a face mask.
Rotten tomato.
Number two, ideas. So, I'm just going to continue to move forward. If you want to backtrack to number one, feel free. But number two, for ideas, we haven't gathered any ideas from any other affected parties yet, simply because we want to start a planning commission, and then we'd go back to the governing body, and then we would just kind of, it's going to be a long process for subdivision regulation amendments. It takes time. So, for now, we're just getting your ideas, and we can present those ideas to the governing body and then have the governing body do feedback. We're trying to work this in tandem. So, there's nothing really to talk about for number two. Number three, comments and ideas from preceding years. Article four, inflexibility of the industrial district. That's come up a couple of times, which is something that I wanted to present before the planning commission for thoughts and feedback, and that's that the way the industrial district right now, our I, our I-1, basically industrial district zoning classification, it really says that these, a limited number of uses are allowed and all the uses are not prohibited, are not allowed. And so, one thing I wanted to think about and present before the planning commission is sort of inverting that to say that these uses are not allowed and all of the uses are allowed, and that's something to consider simply because we don't have an industrial, we don't have a heavy industrial zone, we don't have rail for freight, we don't have anything else. And so, what we're seeing is a lot of people are trying to move into the industrial district and do offices and do different types of land uses that are pretty low in terms of industrial use, but are prohibited because of the way the zoning classification is written right now. So, it's just something to consider before the planning commission if we would want to have a little bit more flexible industrial district, or would we want to adopt a heavy industrial zoning classification and make this be a light industrial zoning classification that allows for a wider range of principal uses? And it's just something to consider. Because right now, like I said, since we don't have, we're not near an ocean, we don't have a port, we don't have an oil refinery, we're not doing, you know, fat rendering or anything of that nature that would actually be considered a heavy industrial use. All these businesses that want to move into the industrial district can't, simply because of the way the zoning district is written in terms of its principal uses.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Just something to consider. I've had multiple people reach out and ask me if they could move to the industrial district. I say no, unless you want to try to go through the conditional use permit for the planning commission or special use, or try to get it rezoned, all of those, which doesn't really make sense to rezone in an industrial park, because that's the way it's written right now, it's more of an industrial park. So, that means you either broaden what's allowed inside of that industrial park or consider different types of zoning classifications to amend it.
You just change, it's like writing a spec for, by exclusion instead of inclusion.
Correct. Exactly right. Number, still on three, sign regulations. There might be a consideration for moratorium. December 31st is the cutoff date. Obviously, this would also have to go before the governing body. And then Article 12, plating. Wichita allows our one-step plating process. We don't have a one-step plating process. And so, what we're seeing is that anytime anyone has adopted, anytime a plat's been recorded, if they want to amend that plat, they have to submit another preliminary plat and then a final plat again. In Wichita, you can submit a one-step final plat, which is basically just a final plat to amend the existing plat. We don't have that. It might be something to consider. We are going to be looking at a replat in March for devastates. Right now, I'm requiring them to submit a preliminary and a final, even though they've already have a plat finalized and submitted. And that's be, just because of the way the subdivisions read. I can't just say you can submit a replat with just a final plat. It has to be a replat with a preliminary and a final plat, which is kind of interesting. But it is the way it is right now, and I can't budge on that until we actually adopt a policy that says, under certain situations, you can just submit a final plat. Of course, the final plat still has to go before the planning commission and then get approved by the governing body. So, what we're going to see is that for, in March, you're going to basically be either approving concurrently a preliminary and a final, or depending on how they move forward, we'd be approving a preliminary and then in April, approving the final, so. But.
Makes sense.
Has anybody talked to the city council about blanket rezoning, their feelings on that?
I've talked to a couple of the council members about rezoning portions of Old Goddard. Some are in favor, some are a little leery. So, it's just a matter of opinion and how much do we want to mitigate on the front. And if we were going to do a blanket rezoning, I think it might behoove us simply to do more of a public outreach, to try to get as many opinions vetted during that process before we brought it before planning commission and then governing body, like meet over at Pathway Church or Tanganika and have boards and exhibits and stuff like that for people to submit their opinions and feedback. That might be one way we could go about doing it, so that when it did come for an actual vote before planning commission, people don't have to feel like they have to vet their opinions all at one time, on their motions all at one time during a small vacuum, and just kind of channel all that energy at one time. Maybe we'd have a more controlled environment that people felt free to kind of express their opinions, and then they could speak their piece during that time, and then show up to planning commission if they want to continue to offer an opinion on that, so.
And we could get business owners to pipe in about how positive it would be.
Yeah, exactly. Correct.
Really, if, if their final plat doesn't come before us, then, of course, you catch all the devil for that.
Yes, but final plats always have to come before planning commission.
Okay.
Yes. So, final, if we had a one-step final plating process, all that would mean is instead of looking at a preliminary and a final, you would look at just the final instead of certain situations. And then that final would, of course, continue on with the governing body for final approval there. So, it's just, what we're seeing is that when you submit a site plan for certain, like commercial businesses or anything that requires a site plan, a lot of what's on the site plan is also what's on the preliminary plat. It becomes somewhat redundant. And then also, if a plat's already recorded and, like I said, they're replating it, we can't exclude them from being able to do the preliminary plat, so they have to submit that preliminary plat. So, you're seeing a preliminary plat and then a final plat, and then they're replating it, so the preliminary plat and then another final plat again, and that becomes somewhat redundant in its process as well. But that's just considerations. No matter what, you're going to see both of either a final and a preliminary or just a final, but it'll still come before planning commission. Plating, I can't, I can't approve plating in-house. It has to be done before the planning and finally the governing body, so. Any questions or comments on inflexibility of the industrial district or sign regulations, moratorium, thoughts, ideas on that?
Would, on the industrial piece, would we be looking for a new area, or would we be trying to pick out pieces of the current? Or is that still, I mean, that's part of the discussion, I guess?
I think it's, it's mostly part of the discussion. Like I said, we don't have rail.
Right.
I don't think we ever will. That's a, I mean, that's kind of a stretch. We don't have ports. We just don't have that heavy industrial that you would see in certain more developed cities, like Wichita's got rail for freight. I think we're going to see more warehouses. So, you're going to see freight being shipped on trucks and coming into Goddard, but you're not going to see, you're not going to see large manufacturing, you're not going to see fat rendering plants, you're not going to see oil refineries, you're not going to see, because oil, you have to have tankers, and those tankers would have to go to ports, and it's just, you don't see a lot of that. So, really, it would just be an amendment of the existing one or a new zoning adoption for heavy in case we did get heavy, and then we could say that this is now light industrial, which allows for more uses, and we have, heavy is sort of a floating zoning classification, kind of like we have with our residential 1B, which is a high, you know, square footage for residential. We would have a floating zoning, heavy industrial, just to say, we have it available in case somebody does want to do heavy industrial. But right now, our industrial park is more like light industrial. It's not really a heavy industrial park.
So, we would be approaching these businesses to say, hey, we'd like to move you to this?
Yeah, basically, all those businesses, yeah. And either that or we would amend the zoning district to say that all these new businesses can be allowed in there. So, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't affect anything on the new businesses. They are all allowed.
Right.
But now you're adding to what's allowed inside of that zoning district, and then, you know, you could have more, you know, office spaces or something along those lines, things that, you know, if people wanted to move in there and it was more non-traditional industrial, then they could do it.
Off the top of your head, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Sure.
I mean, you said that there's, you've had to turn some people away.
Yes.
Do you know what, do you remember what kind of?
Yes.
Industry that, I mean, what, what were they?
I, the turning away was more of telling them that they had to go through a more lengthy process than would have normally been accepted. So, for example, if they were saying, I want to do a recycling plant or something like that, like, then that would have been acceptable. But to say that they wanted to do physical therapy, it's just not allowed in an industrial zone. So, if they want to do like advanced physical therapy for seniors or advanced physical therapy for children or something along those lines, that's actually not allowed in the industrial zone, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and schools.
Maybe not in more, like, heavier, just been different.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, not, typically, we're not talking about necessarily doing, remanding the zoning for industrial to allow for heavier. This is, we don't have any heavy people that want to move in. There's no, there's no recycling, and there's no, I mean, there is recycling, but there is not like, oil refineries want to move into our industrial park. It's lighter industrial wants to move in, but the way the zoning's written right now is very exclusionary, so that those ones have to find a different commercial spot.
So, it's almost commercial?
In some cases, yes. And the ones that are, don't function as a traditional industrial use inside of, have been grandfathered in anyway. So, it's just kind of allowing for a flexibility of our industrial district if we find that not enough industrials moving in and more commercial wants to move in. This would allow that to happen, so we can generate revenue off those empty lots that we have in an industrial park. It's just something to think about. What do you guys think about sign regulations, moratorium? Do you think we should try to address it sooner? Do you think we should try to have a moratorium, which basically just means to suspend it until further notice, until we can come up to a more amicable conclusion? Like I said, obviously, it's got to go before governing body for that approval, for the final approval for a moratorium.
Where are we at on the, the sign regulation process?
It's in limbo right now, completely in limbo, simply because we can't.
Limbo where?
In my office.
Stop little here.
No. It has to be approved before the planning, the governing body finally, and then, so we're trying to amend it, but everything that's, we're discussing at the governing body level, they want to see different changes as well, which means it has to come back before planning commission and finalize, and then go back before governing body to be finalized again. So, it, it's kind of doing this feedback loop right now, and so we're not, well, I'm trying to get more feedback from the planning commission. If we're happy with the direction it's going in, or do you think we should suspend it to get more feedback from businesses? Or do we need to have a sit-down with the governing body and kind of have a big powwow so that we can all kind of vet it out? You know, like I said, opinions vary.
It would seem to me, because we haven't talked about it, it must've been four or five months, right?
Yes.
Since you rewrote?
Yeah, a portion of it, yeah.
A portion of it before.
Mm-hmm.
When it seemed to me like if, if, if the opinion of this group differed from that group, we might, we might as well sit down together.
Yeah.
And try to come to a, an agreement, because it's, we're just wasting your time.
Yeah.
Which is fine, I get paid.
Well, but still, there are things you can be doing.
I mean, doing the moratorium is just a, a byproduct. I mean, it's.
Kicking the can down the road.
Yeah.
Yes, it is kicking the can, yeah, very much so. And yes, you're right. Either way, I mean, if, if we wanted to have more of a sit-down, hashing it out, all the details, because what I, what I hear is, is sometimes solidarity, but then sometimes a change of opinion, where some people want more curb appeal, but does that mean only monument signs? Is that, you know, and then, of course, businesses want to know how this is going to affect them in terms of pulling a building, pulling a sign permit? What do they have to comply with long-term? You know, are they have to, are they going to have to be up to compliance by December 31st of, of this year? What does this mean? Have we adopted anything, you know, between and everything else? And so, some view it as being anti-business, some view it as being, this is what we want for the growth of the city. So, there's a lot that kind of, that needs to be considered. And, you know, I hear a lot of conflicting opinions on it, so I'm trying to get as much of a holistic idea of which direction we want to move forward in, in a way that it'll actually be adopted, because it has to obviously be adopted before planning commission and then adopted before the governing body. So, I want it to be fully vetted before everybody, so that when it becomes ink on paper, so to say, you know, so to speak, then it's actually what you guys think is correct and what the planning, and what the governing body thinks is the best way to move forward, so.
I think for you guys, just to sit down, as a whole.
Okay.
I, I agree. I mean, that's where you get some.
That way you get firsthand opinions.
Put everybody face to face.
We'd have a workshop.
Yeah.
When's the last time we've had a workshop? I'm not even sure.
Let me see. What we hear was.
It's been a long time.
We said they had one time in the city council. Since I've been on, one time.
One time?
Because I think it would be, it would be good to, to, to interact with that group too, because I, I might know most of them, but, excuse me, I can't say interacting.
I think that'd be good, and I think we can see when we can schedule that, so we can have a joint session.
Yeah, we have feedback from business owners on what their ideas are.
We have one business owner who's going to speak back, and.
Rest of the old is, I think that's, they've never talked about it, so.
Yeah.
But like, if we did a workshop.
I represent more than just myself.
Yeah.
But maybe have, you know, as part of the workshop, have the business owners come in and talk and have the, that sign lady, you know, the.
Yes, city board.
Have some of the sign companies come in and, or some of the, have a few people come in and present before we start talking about things, so that we're all hearing the same things and we're all on the same page.
I think that's great.
Yeah, because it, excuse me, it'd be more of an informal.
Yes, very much so. And it could be even being, like I said, over at Tanganika or Pathway or someplace else. Doesn't have to be here. We could have round tables and boards and signs and examples of other precedents from other cities of how they're handling it, and, and we can kind of go from there.
And the longer we're doing this out, the worse it's going to be on new business and developers and the current business people.
It can, right now, the way it reads is, is as is, so it's going, you know, right now, everyone has to be in compliance by the end of this year, unless we decide to[1700.26] right now, everyone has to be in compliance by the end of this year, unless we decide to do a moratorium.
Get her down.
Which I think, based on the fact it's not going to move quick enough by the end of the year, that makes the most sense. Because if we don't put a timeframe on it, we just simply say that's what we're moving towards until we come up with something better.
Right.
And should we, you know, I mean, should we agree with something in 90 days that everybody's in agreeance with, and it goes, it gets voted on, so be it. But at least it takes the unknown out for the 12/31 deadline.
Yes, I think that's good.
You can't keep everybody in limbo.
And what do you think about one-step final plating? Is that something that would want to be considered? Do you want me to draft the regulations?
Is that simply on the replat, or is that, would that be overall?
It would be under certain provisions, so replating, one-step final plat process, and one-step final plating on certain site plans. For example, if the site plan reflects the majority of what would normally be on a preliminary plat, I think you could go for one-step final plating process. I think, for example, the McCullough addition, didn't need a preliminary plat, could have had a one, that was one lot. There wasn't much to show, you're not showing a bunch of trees, there's nothing there, it's just one lot. That could have had a one-step final plating process, we didn't really need a preliminary on that one.
Many of them we do together, anyway.
Yes, that's true. And you, ultimately, when something is, when an addition or anything of that nature is in such a short time span, it just, you know, because there's not a lot of variables, for example, then it makes sense to have one-step final plating, because that way we don't have to run through that preliminary. It just becomes an extra agenda item at that point, so.
Okay, makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, and I can draft something on that, we can take it up for consideration. Okay, number four, I'll go back, sorry, that's your.
Yeah.
Information on any relevant changes in state statutes. So Article 6, home occupations. Home occupations that were prohibited under 6.14, sale of firearms, ammunition, and gunsmithing, i.e. the repair of firearms, under the Kansas statutes annotated 12-16-12, I'm sorry, 16124, Attorney General's Opinion Number 2012-2, the Kansas Attorney General Opinion, that this provision preempted local zoning regulations that prohibited home-based businesses engaged in sale of firearms and ammunition. The Attorney General noted that the intention of the enactment was to remove the authority of cities to regulate firearm licenses. Because of this, the Goddard provision that prohibited the sale of firearms and ammunition in Goddard zoning code is inconsistent with the Kansas statute, and was rendered null and void by the enactment of the statute. So basically, what this means is that the federal firearms license, the FFL, somebody requested one in one of our subdivisions, and ATF, tobacco, and, excuse me, alcohol, tobacco, firearms, and explosives reached out to me and says, is this in violation of any of your subdivision regulations? And it was. Are, we have a home occupation under Article 6 that says specifically you cannot sell firearms out of your home as a home occupation. But I also, of course, reached out to the city attorney, and I said, hey, I found this Kansas law that was enacted. Is this in viol, which one, obviously, is this saying that we need to render this one void? And he said, yes. That according to the Attorney General of Kansas, no city can have a home occupation prohibition on firearms and sale of firearms and ammunition. So even though it is in our.
It has to be allowed.
Yes, so I called ATF to let them know they can issue a FFL license. Basically, the way it was written and the way it was adopted, it says you cannot have an FFL in the city of Goddard in a residential district. The Attorney General of Kansas said, yes, you can. So it renders our code moot, and at that point, we sort of strike it from the record. But we would have to actually bring it before Planning Commission to get it officially removed, and then take it back before the governing body to have it wiped from the record. So right now, it's just null and void right now, and it's still sitting on our records. But this is just to break it before you, to let you be aware that if anyone does ask for an FFL, by state law, we are obligated to give them an FFL, so, or allow that FFL. We don't issue an FFL, obviously, but we are obligated to say we can't restrict somebody from getting an FFL. So, is there any questions on that, or comments? All right, moving forward. There is no, obviously, recommendations and actions, this is all receive and file. All of your opinions are obviously going to be written down, we're going to try to synthesize them to move forward, writing some policy to drive the city forward. And anything that we do write and is adopted by Planning Commission obviously has to be adopted by the governing body to be finalized as an ordinance. So we're going to move on to I, staff report. So annexation, as the city grows, land adjoining the city limit will go through the annexation process, involving the Planning Commission as necessary to consider the advisability of annexing certain lands. If the property owner of the land is petitioning the city to be annexed, no review is necessary. They're simply saying, hey, we want to be part of the city, we bring it before the governing body, the governing body adopts it, we notify the county clerk and the registered deeds, and that's it. But if they don't want to be annexed, and we want to unilaterally annex them, we will notify the Planning Commission, but ultimately, it will go before the governing body, they have a final authority on this, and the Planning Commission gets notified with a certified letter, so all of you will receive a certified letter in your mail saying that you should show up to this public meeting, which will be here, of course. Excuse me, and the governing body will consider all opinions, including the opinion of the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission is going to have regulatory authority over that annexed land. So your opinion obviously matters very much. And that's basically what the last part says. If the property owner does not want to be annexed, the city will unilaterally annex that property, and it will trigger a review process involving the Planning Commission and other interested parties, which includes the school district, board of county commissioners, rural water district number four, and other interested parties, including Alaka Township, and so. But the Planning Commission, since you guys have authority over any land that we annex, in terms of, like I said, regulatory processes being zoning, code enforcement, et cetera, you would be notified, and you would come give your opinion, but the ultimate decision would be before the governing body. But your opinion would be taken, be weighted heavily in that consideration, so. Is there any questions on that? Excuse me.
When are you going to start that?
Well, see, it's a matter of internal deliberation from the city staff level. And then finally, before all this can get kicked off, the governing body would have to adopt a resolution saying that we're going to have a public hearing on unilateral annexation, at which point, once they do sign that, if they do sign that, we would publish it in the city newspaper, excuse me, two weeks before the meeting, but it has to be 60 days out. But then all of you would receive letters in the mail within 10 days of that resolution being signed.
I guess as, I should ask, will you petition, will you ask them to petition first, I guess?
Yes. If they're, in certain situations, it's completely up to the governing body if they want to decide that under certain situations, they don't want to do it. But under some situations, if they do want to do it, then it's completely up to them, they've signed the resolution. There would be a public hearing. Planning Commission would be able to speak, the owners, the property owners would be able to speak, everyone would be able to speak who's an interested party, and then the governing body would either sign an ordinance saying they're in, excuse me, or they would say, well, it's not, we don't want to consider this for being annexed, and then they would just terminate that conversation. Public meeting will be over, and they will go about their business, so.
Okay.
Those are the two options.
Okay, I forgive my ignorance.
No, you're fine.
Does that mean that they're going to be annexed either way?
Correct.
No matter what?
No matter what.
Whether they want to or not.
That's right.
Okay.
Assuming the governing body says.
Assuming the governing body says yes.
Okay.
So first, they would have to sign a resolution saying we're going to have a public meeting, in which case, all of you would receive letters, including property owners and everybody else, and anybody who's interested. They would show up to the public meeting, governing body would hear them out, including the mayor and everybody else. If they decide, if the governing body decides it makes sense to annex them, regardless of how they feel, then they'd be annexed. If they decide that it's not worth it, or they feel like, yeah, it's not, it's not relative annexation, then they would just terminate the open, the meeting, and we would be done, so.
So is it, I mean, is it, very specifically, is it, has to be anywhere, like, they have to be like literally adjoining?
So state law.
Is there, I'm just curious, is there a distance?
There is a lot that goes into unilateral annexation, let me tell you. An annexation in general, for that matter, the state of Kansas has got a very lengthy process that involves notifying all of you, is one of that processes. But adjoining means that you literally are touching the city limit. And that can also mean if you're across the street, or across a rail, or across a river. So there's different ways that adjoining means. But also, petitioning, like I said, is the easiest one. If I petition you, and you say, yep, then we're good, we take it before the governing body, they sign an ordinance, and everybody moves forward. We had that last year, it was a very simple process, somebody wanted to be brought in board, so we just annexed them.
Right.
Unilateral annexation is a lengthy process that involves multiple certified mails to send out, and also a review. For example, if a property, if somebody, for example, let's say you had 21 acres and it was agricultural, we can't unilaterally annex you under any circumstances, so. If you had 30 acres of agricultural and you had a sprawling ranch, we could not annex you by state law. But if you have 19 acres and a ranch, we could annex you unilaterally by state law, if you are joining the city limit. But also, there's all other provisions in there. For example, if your property touches Commissioner Grayfins' property, and we unilaterally annex Commissioner Grayfins' property and your property at the same time, that's considered abutting and adjoining. So it's kind of interesting to think about, but in terms of Jenga, you can annex the top one if you annex all the ones beneath it at the same time.
Tetris.
It's a very lengthy process, like I said, there's a lot of law that goes into that. Kansas is very, is very strict in how you can annex, and what's allowed and acceptable, and what's called due process. You have to have due process in there, so.
I get the general picture.
Well now, is Dylan's warehouse?
They're already in the city limits.
Okay. But how, how did they get there?
They probably petitioned, but I don't know. Dylan's warehouse has always been in the city limits since I came on board, I don't know the history behind it, but they've always been in the city limits since I came on board.
My understanding is, is there's a piece of the ditch between Maine, Goddard, and them that had to be annexed at the same time, but I don't know, that was, that was my question was.
Yes, so state law requires that if you're going to annex a road, you have to annex all the properties that touch that road. And so there's, there's things that go into that, too. So if there's a road that runs in between Dylan's and the city limit of Goddard, and Dylan's was touching that road, and we annexed just that road, we would have to annex Dylan's. We can annex Dylan's and not annex the road, but if we wanted just to annex that road, we would have to annex Dylan's at the same time. Just things to think about, but.
He knows all the details.
Yeah, I'm obligated to know all the details. Or else it would be rendered.
It's where you live.
Yeah, rendered null and void during that open meeting process. There's a lot, like I said, there's a lot that goes into it, a lot to consider. As more rural plating happens, and the city grows, and we start annexing, we've had multiple individuals reach out to the city to annex them, and we actually could not, simply because, one, they were an island annexation, which means the city was here, and they were way over here. And the reason they were asking to be annexed, even though we were here and they were way over here, is because KDHE, under the EPA, is requiring more and more stringent review of lagoons and water wells. Central County will not let you sell your property without a thorough review of your water well and your lagoon. And some individuals have found that out, as they turn around to go sell their property 20 years later, and they have to pay $10,000 to bring their lagoons and water wells up to code. So then they turn around and ask the city if we can annex them and bring water and sewer to their property. And of course, that's way too cost prohibitive for one property that's a quarter mile away. So as we start to move and annex, people are finding it more advantageous when they want to sell their property if they're in the city limits. So that's why some people have actually just petitioned, and we've just simply annexed them. So it's things to think about as we grow. So as mentioned, devastates replat. Boston Company has submitted a revised site plan for the devastates memory care patio homes. After the site plan has been approved, the pre-plat and final plat will need to be approved for the replating of the patio homes, and that's something that I just mentioned. The new patio home builder wants to sell the homes individually instead of having them as a buyback policy. This requires individual parcels for taxing purposes. So a site plan can be approved by city planner, being myself, internally, as long as there's not a deviation in terms of 25% additional square footage, or if they're deviating in terms of they want to expand the PUD district that they currently have under it. But if they don't do any of those two things, then I'm able to approve it in-house. In which case, you would then see the preliminary and the final plat for the replating must be approved by the Planning Commission, and then finally, it must be approved by the governing body, the final plat. So they were originally going to have, the way it is right now is they have it under a PUD, and it's already been platted. And so that PUD says that they have this one big parcel, and on that parcel is going to be 34 patio homes. They decided they don't want to do that anymore. They want to sell that to a builder, and that builder is going to build 31 patio homes. So instead of 34, they've dropped it down to 31 currently, they might change again. They want to drop it down to 31, and they want to sell them individually, one by one, by one by one. Instead of having a whole bunch, and they sell one, and then that person, when they pass or move on, or whatever, they sell it back to the devastates, they don't want to do that anymore. They want to just have one patio home get sold, and that's it, and they move on. So they, that requires all of them to have their own tax ID. Well, that requires them all to have, be on their own individual parcel. And so that's going to require plating of each individual lot for each individual patio home, which is a replat, so. That comes at its own fee, and the fee of our engineer, and then of course, approval by Planning Commission, and then final approval by governing body for that, so. And that's it for me. At this point, we move on to item J, Planning Commissioner comments?
No comments?
No comments.
No.
No comments.
All right.
Me neither.
What?
I know. It's cold, I don't want to think.
Well, then we would move on to item K, which would be adjournment. And next regular Planning Commission meeting will be March 8th.
Looking for a motion. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me too.